We are in.
Thank you. Good evening. The time is seven thirty-three. I would like the call to order the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which has changed, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You. Look, if you please call the roll.
Mister Burnett.
Present.
Mister Camacho.
Here.
Mister Goldstein.
Here.
Miss the Jolste Eichner.
Present.
Miss Smith, here. Miss Ayers, present. Mister Uvelman. Miss Revolutes.
Here.
Miss Young.
Here.
Mister Kites. Miss McMur.
Present.
Miss Alterman. Mister Meek.
Here.
Miss Shanahan.
Here.
Mister Frayer.
Here.
Mister Uvelman. Mister Kites. Miss Al- Miss Alterman. We have twelve. We have a forum.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of October tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Miss Shanahan makes a motion. Any corrections, omissions, or deletions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is public participation. I see one person here doesn't wish, I don't think you wish to address the council. Is there anybody online, James?
First up right now. If there are any members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your hand electronically now.
So we will close public participation. There are no resignations or appointments or reappointments. And under the mayor's remarks, I have a couple. I'll thank you to the DPW, Public Works, and all who participated this past weekend in the Open House Touch a Truck. It was really a great success. A lot of people come, probably over a thousand people showed up, lots of kids and a lot of kids wore their costumes. They're really a fun event. We also unveiled the city's first one hundred percent electric vehicle that will be used in the downtown South Norwalk in Norwalk area for cleaning up and doing those kinds of things. And it's really exciting. That's the first of many electric vehicles to come. Yesterday, we also announced the COVID nineteen Housing Relief Assistance Program, where the city is providing five hundred thousand dollars to people who are affected by COVID and perhaps are not able to pay their rent or their mortgage. They have, we're partnering with, partnering with the Alliance for Community Empowerment and person to person who will be administering the program. A person would have to qualify. They have to be a resident of Norwalk before March of two thousand twenty and they can make application. Information will be on our website. This Saturday at ten o'clock to one, we're having, in partnership with the city, well, the city of Norwalk's Police Department, will be hosting their third Keep Kids Safe Connecticut statewide gun buyback and gun safe giveaway day. This is a voluntary gun buyback program and safe firearm storage event allows gun owners to safely remove their unwanted weapons. Sometimes weapons are laying around. People don't know what to do with them. We will buy those guns back. You'll get a gift card in return and they'll be turned into class shares. So that'll be a lot of fun. If you haven't already seen it, I would recommend that you take a look down at Cat Pasture Beach at our brand new skate park that will be opened October twenty-eighth, this coming Saturday at nine thirty. It's absolutely remarkable. It's state of the art. It's such a beautiful job that they did down there. I think if you come down, you'll be impressed. So if you enjoy skateboarding, rollerblading, or roller scooters, just bring it with you and come on down. And last but not least, the city of Norwalk is hosting our first ever Halloween Nightfare on Washington Street this weekend. It's an exciting event set to take place Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from five P M. to ten P M. And Sunday, October twenty-ninth, from eleven to four. They'll be transforming Washington Street into a Halloween Extravaganza, featuring Halloween-themed activities such as bounce houses, games, pumpkin painting, musical performances, a pet parade, a trick-or-treat bag, and decorating. So come on down and bring the family. Have a great time. Mister Burnett, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. The consent calendar for today, October twenty-fourth, will be read by Councilmember Jen McMur.
Thank you, President Burnett. Starting with seven A Finance and Claims Committee. One, report the claim of the claims committee dated October twenty-twenty-three. Two, for informational purposes only, narrative on tax collections dated October twenty-twenty-three. Three, for information purposes only, monthly tax collectors' reports dated September twenty-twenty-three. Seven B Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Committee. Number one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into an agreement with Greenwich Kennel Club for the use of Taylor Farm and immediate surrounding grounds for their pause by the Sea Dog Show event to be held from Thursday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, to Sunday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-four, from ten A M. to four P M. Setup time from Tuesday, June fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve P M. to Wednesday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at five P M. With teardown on Sunday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-four, by three P M., approximately five hundred plus people. Two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to extend the contract with Norwalk Community Sailing for three additional years per section I two of lease agreement dated October twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, and to a rowing component to the existing contract. Seven C Community Services Committee. One A authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept grant funds in the amount of thirty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars from the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the sexually transmitted diseases and tuberculosis control programs for the period October first, two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. One B authorize that mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary to implement the sexually transmitted diseases and tuberculosis control programs for the period October first, two thousand twenty-three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, or amendments as may be necessary with the Triangle Community Center located at six five zero West Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut, zero six eight five zero, to administer the Community Services Department ARPA COVID nineteen to serve the needs of the LGBTQ A-plus student population for a total amount of seventy thousand dollars. Account number noted. Seven D, sorry. Seven E Land Use and Building Management Committee. One, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents for the disposition of city surplus property District C Block twenty-eight C Lot seven. Approximately point two-three acres consists of mostly wetland located on Sheffield Road to Stephen A. Adelman and Sally Arnold Adelman, adjacent property owner at eight Sheffield Road, and the amount of one thousand dollars in accordance with their proposal to provide searship of this wetland property. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilmember McMur. You heard the reading of the consent count out. All for the question. All those in favor show by a sign of eye or raising your hand. All those opposed have the same right. Any abstention? Consent count is approved. As stated, back to you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Burnett. Miss Smith, item seven D one.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute the CPB Right-of-Way and Road Reconstruction Agreement, Deed Clarification Agreement, and Declaration of Restricted Covenant between the City of Norwalk and Gardella Brothers Limited Liability Company for the Memorandum of Assistant Corporation Counsel Darren Callahan dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. I would like to move that item and just say a few words, if I may, please.
Absolutely. You have the floor.
Yes, this agreement before us tonight is the culmination of seven years of negotiations between the city of Norwalk and the Gardella family. And I think we owe a great deal of thanks to our legal department, our legal team, led by attorney Mario Coppola, Darren Callahan, to our DPW Department, Recreations Department, for all the hard work to finally bring us to an agreement that we can all feel comfortable with. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Attorney Coppola to discuss, give us the details of the agreement.
So, good evening, everyone. Mario Coppola Corporation Counsel. Yes, for about seven years, we've been working with different counsel. It's changed over that time on behalf of the Gardella family. Back in nineteen twenty, just to get away from context, back in nineteen twenty-two, the Gardella family deeded to the city, for the benefit of the city, for the benefit of the public, the Cat Pasture Beach area. And at the time that the Gardella family did that, they put some deed restrictions in favor of their remaining property to allow that property to have access in the Cat Pasture Beach area to and from their property. And they approached the city about seven years ago, seeking to address some issues concerning that deed. The issues mostly arose from poorly defined and outdated reservations and restrictions in that deed. There are other issues which they sought to resolve with us, including easements over Cat Pasture Beach, providing for access to and from their property. So, over the course of, again, about seven years, there are different iterations of plans to resolve these issues. And ultimately, we were able to reach an agreement in principle, which has then been, which then provided in writing to the council and has been approved, has been reviewed and approved by the DPW and the Park and Recs Committees recently, which resolves all those issues and provides for a new roadway to be constructed in the subject area to provide more appropriate access to the remaining Gardella parcels and to provide for increased and improved access in roadway for the Cat Pasture Beach area. As part of the agreement, the Gardella family is providing a payment towards the construction of that roadway and maintenance of that roadway. At this time, I'd also like to ask, I see that counsel for the Gardella family, Attorney Cafaro is here. I envision Attorney Cafaro, Attorney Liz Suchi also worked on behalf of the Gardellas. Mister Chairman, Mister President, I'd like to ask if Mister Cafaro could have an opportunity to also speak to this with regard to the agreement and the discussions that have taken place over many years with his clients.
Absolutely, yes.
I see his appearance, so I'm assuming he would like that opportunity.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I don't know what that means. If you like, I can search the web.
And I see that Attorney Suchi is here. She just popped, she's now on the screen too. So I would like to also, Mister President, offer her an opportunity to speak as well if she would like.
So, right.
Attorney Cafaro or Attorney Suchi?
Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, members of the council, and thank you, Corporation Counsel Mario Coppola. My co-counsel, Liz Suchi, and I were hired by the Gardella family to assist them in the negotiations, which had gone on for about six years at the time with the city of Norwalk, and unfortunately met some fits and starts and had some issues along the way. I think Attorney Suchi and I sort of approached this in a brand-new, fresh way, and we're very pleased and fortunate enough to meet with that same attitude with Corporation Counsel Coppola and Assistant Corporation Counsel Darren Callahan. This was, the goal was to make this a win-win agreement. We have this precious resource, Cat Pasture Beach, that is for the benefit of the public. It has been used over the years for varying things, all to the benefit of the public. You know, the mayor earlier on, I think, referenced the skate park that's going on there and all the wonderful things that do go on there. Truly a treasure. From the Gardellas' point of view, I've often said this, they are synonymous. Sometimes their name is synonymous with the city of Norwalk, especially East Norwalk and the waterfront. They have worked in partnership with the city to make our waterfront available and accessible to all members of the public. So over the course of this past year, attorneys Coppola and Callahan, along with Attorney Suchi and myself, worked very hard to make sure we could make this an agreement that was finally come to fruition and be able to be signed, that all parties were in agreement on, and that was a win-win situation. And again, I thank them, and I thank this council and the two committees that are met, and I thank the mayor for letting his support and encouragement to get this deal done as quickly as possible. So I'll yield to my co-counsel, Attorney Suchi. Again, want to thank the Law Department. They serve this city well. As I've often said, they were tough, but fair, respectful, and reasonable and responsible, and again, served the city very well. And I encourage you all to please approve the agreement that's before you and allow the mayor to sign it. So with that, with your permission, turn it over to Attorney Suchi.
Mr. Suchi, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. I reiterate the comments that my colleague Attorney Cafaro has already made. We are very pleased to reach the point where we are today, and it certainly wasn't without the efforts of Attorney Coppola, Attorney Callahan, and also other individuals such as Vanessa Valderris, Steve Kleppen, and others, the city, who reviewed the documents and shared their comments, concerns, and questions with us, so the document could reflect the city's needs, while at the same time allowing the Gardellas to achieve what they'd like to achieve. It was a long time in coming, but I'm very pleased that we are at the point we are today, that we can move forward with this document. So thank you very much, all, for your time, for your attention. And also thanks do go to the Planning and Zoning Commission that recently reviewed the document under section eight twenty-four of the general statutes. With that, I don't have anything else to add, but I would ask that you would move this matter forward tonight for action. Thank you again for your time and to the city staff for all their hard efforts and hard work on this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Suchi and Mister Cafaro. I know everybody worked really hard on this. Any comments or questions? Mister Meek. Are you on mute?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a small typo, I think, underneath the row, the Row and Road Construction Agreement. It's on, begin on PDF page seventy-three of the packet. Item seven-two spells out a hundred and sixty days for failure to complete, and then it's noted as sixty days. I think that needs to change to one hundred and sixty. And that's basically the provision where if the city can't complete what we're supposed to do by May of twenty-five, that a hundred and sixty days thereafter, the Gardellas are, it's their prerogative if they want to finish the work. So I'm in support of the agreement overall. I just noticed that one thing. And then, while I have the floor, I would just say, I'm a little concerned not seeing, like, what I call a fully flushed-out scope of work to get this all done by May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I'm just concerned that we're not set up to get it done in that amount of time and for the little amount of money that we have to do it, which is a different issue. But those are my concerns. And again, I have your, you have my support for it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mister Meek. Any further comments or questions? And Mister Coppola, you're going to address the typo?
Yes, yeah, I'll review that again and verify that. But Ms. Valderris is on the, is on as well, and I'd like to ask her just to address the common or concern raised with regard to the timing for the Public Works Department to perform the proposed construction work as set forth in the agreement.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Mister Meek, I understand your concern, and as I stated before, we are comfortable with the timeline that we have. The idea is that we'll be able to get everything completed during the winter in regards to be able to engage a contractor, and we're going to get the work done next year. And that's why we still have a little bit of extra month in case we go into some inclement weather towards the end of twenty-four, so we can finish by May twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Ms. Valderris. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Mister Goldstein?
Sorry, I'm in favor. I tried to raise my hand to do it fast enough.
And Mister Camacho and Mister Meek?
Sorry, I'm in favor.
Okay, and Mister Meek said he was in favor. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Miss Smith, item seven D two, A and B.
Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt Paving LLC, T M P twenty twenty-three dash three, concrete curb and sidewalk on Row Eight and Avenue for an amount not to exceed one million one hundred thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Account numbers noted. And two B authorize the direct transportation, mobility, and parking to execute orders on contract with Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt LLC, T M P twenty twenty-three dash three, concrete curb and sidewalks on Row Eight and Avenue for an amount not to exceed one hundred eleven thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars. Account numbers noted. I would like to move those items. And I would also like to introduce Garrett Velelo from our Transportation and Mobility and Parking Department to give us the details of this project.
Okay, Miss Smith has moved the item, and Mister Velelo, you have the floor.
Great. Good evening, council members. Just want to make sure you can hear me all right. So this was also one of the, another project that has been a long time in the making. For as far as the design of these Rowian Avenue sidewalks, it goes back to fiscal year twenty twenty-one, and when Jim and I first joined the city, it was one of the first projects as we looked at some of the legacy projects that we wanted to move forward, that we walked and with the council members in the neighborhood and started to engage the community and held numerous meetings regarding these sidewalks. If, and the location of the sidewalks is very clearly evident today along the west side of the road, where you can find dirt paths that have been trodden over a significant period of time by people walking to and from Rowian Village to the train station and to Pinkney Park. So the sidewalks in totality are about zero point seven miles, a portion of the state section of Row Eight and Avenue, and it continues north all the way to the train station. There's a number of other enhancements as part of the project. Today, there's one crosswalk along the route. We're putting in eight additional crossings with pedestrian safety beacons, and we're also improving the signal I CUBLIP to create a pedestrian crossing and have push buttons. The entirety of the project will be concrete sidewalks. They'll be five feet wide. It's federally funded through ARPA dollars, and every enhancement will be ADA compliant. We received a total of four different bids for the project, with the apparent low bidder being Priority Landscaping. However, after a bid analysis, we found an error with the second lowest bid, Colona Concrete, which affected their total dollar amount by forty-five hundred, making them the lowest bidder. And we are here tonight to seek your approval for Colona to commence these sidewalks. We we hope to do this over the winter. You know, we are before you tonight to consider this application, given that there is no DPW committee meeting because of the election in November, and we want to be responsive to the community and make sure that because it's concrete sidewalks, we could construct over the winter. And with the anticipated project schedule, our desire is to finish the sidewalks prior to the summer and the seasonal busy season in Row Eight and Avenue. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the project.
Anybody have any questions? Miss Shanahan?
I don't really have a question. I really have a huge thank you. This is a project that didn't really start in twenty twenty-one. I think this project started well before that, maybe more like twenty fifteen, and had been in capital budgets for a long time, but I think the first day or the second day that you guys came to Norwalk, we, Tom Livingston and I had you down to take a look at this because it's been such a priority for the village of Rowington. It's really the only path to get to the train station. It's been very, very unsafe for years and years. We were so afraid that there'd be an accident there. So we are so delighted that this is coming in. It's going to be a huge enhancement for the village of Rowington, but also for the people who take the train and come walking into Row Eight and for work. That's so important, as well as a lot of the cultural events that people take the train to Row Eight and for and come in. So we're delighted about it and cannot wait to see it get started. So thank you very much for taking this project as serious as we did. And we have to give a little shout out to Mister Livingston, who's not here, who has championed this over the last eight years. I think this is one of his biggest priorities for our district. So thank you.
I know he's not here, but he's listening, so.
I know he's listening. Hi, Tom.
Thank you, Mister Livingston. Mr. Meek?
Yeah, thank you. You said it's ARPA-funded, but the agenda has city-based contracts? How does that work?
Yeah, so the base bid for the project will be entirely ARPA-funded. The account numbers that you see are for new sidewalk construction, and that's just to cover the contingencies for the projects.
Okay, so the city would pick it up if it runs a little over?
Yeah, to cover any change orders associated with the contracts.
Okay, so then, I think I'm familiar with this kind of construction, and forgive me if I'm wrong, maybe you can correct me, but you'll lay in the curbs and sidewalks, and then on the shoulder, you probably have a little temporary asphalt patch to kind of tie in to the curb. When would the overall road be slated for full pavement?
So.
I can answer that, Garrett.
Yeah, and I'm happy to, just if you may, if I may, before Vanessa. The portion on the state section of the roadway, we worked closely with ConDOT. They reviewed the application. On the state portion, we're not actually allowed to sock it into the road. We're allowed to sock it at the face of the roadway. Otherwise, the city would be liable for repaving the entirety of the roadway at significant cost. So on the state section of the project, we're actually using a different type of curbing. It's called hang form curbing, where we pour the curb outside of the asphalt, and it actually sits on top of the asphalt, which makes the project a little bit unique, but it helps the city control costs. And then Vanessa can certainly speak to the repaving aspect of the project.
So on the city's side, we're going to follow up after the project is complete. After the project is complete, we're going to pave. We're also going to need to do some drainage work in the area. So this way, with the installation of the curbs, we don't create any puddling of water in some of the areas that a water used to run to the grass.
Thank you.
Other comments or discussion? Mister Frayer?
Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. Having been a commuter and having walked that path or bits and pieces of that path for many years, I certainly look at this as a real benefit going forward. This is going to be tremendous safety precautions that are going to go in there and just going to make life a lot more pleasurable and durable for people that have to suffer that commute into New York City all the time. So thank you very much for pushing this through.
Other comments or discussion?
Nora has her hand up.
Sorry?
Nora has her hand up.
Oh, where?
On the screen, Mister Mayor.
Didn't show on my screen.
So I too am delighted that this work is finally being done, having seen this path be trodden in life-threatening ways for many years. But I did, just because we have received communication requesting this, I just wanted to make sure that we had full clarity from Garrett, from Mario, if necessary, that the bid correction process was handled in accordance with our normal procedures and that bid corrections are appropriate when there is an error. Could you just speak briefly to that so that we all have clarity on that process, given that we did receive a comment about it?
Yeah, I'm happy to start, Mario. So we did, I think there was a delay in notifying Priority Landscaping on the results of the bid analysis. So apologies for the delay and the notification. With all the bids, we look through item by item, line by line, every unit price. And in this particular circumstance, the apparent low bid wasn't the actual low bid after further analysis. So I apologize for any confusion in the letter, and we'll make sure in the future that's included in the letter to the council as well, just to provide clarification.
Okay, thank you. And Mario, again, just can you confirm that this is sort of the appropriate process by which the city verifies bids? And we, you know, have no reason to be concerned here that errors happen and they get corrected?
As you said, errors happen and they get corrected. And at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we're that we're identifying which is the correct low bidder. So if there was a miscalculation at first, then it makes sense to to resolve it by, if there's a correction in the calculations, to determine who the low bidder is.
Great, fantastic. Well, thank you so much, and I'm very excited about this project. I'm really looking forward to seeing this work move forward.
Any further comment or discussion? Yeah, I want to thank TMP and Operations, too. This is going to make that area so much safer as people walk from the train station down to the center of Rowayton. And this is a comprehensive program that we've instituted to make Norwalk more navigable through sidewalks, bike tracks, bike paths, and everything else. So it's good partnership. Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I think that's the items on the agenda, Ms. Revolus.
Motion to adjourn.
At, motion to adjourn at 8:04, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions, we are adjourned at 8:04. Thank you.